I'd like to call it to order, the Dauphin County Board of Commissioners workshop meeting for Wednesday, October first, two thousand and twenty five. We'll begin with a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
We have minutes for approval next week. Is there any questions about the minutes? Hearing non-executive sessions held between meetings, Mr. Haggerty.
On Tuesday, September thirtieth, an executive session was held to obtain the advice of legal counsel regarding collective bargaining, the purchase or lease of real property, personnel matters, tourism funding, and county finances.
Any questions of Mr. Haggerty? Hearing none, we'll move on to public participation on agenda items only. This is the part of the meeting where if you have any comments on agenda items before us today, you're welcome to come up and share. You'll need to state your name. It is a three-minute tap. Anyone who would like to speak, we're also live streaming. Anyone who would like to speak. Seeing none, move on to directors and guests. We have some guests with us today. Humane Society of Harrisburg area, Safe Haven, Courtney Ford. Good morning.
Good morning.
Hello.
Welcome.
So we're here to talk about the Safe Haven program that we have at Harrisburg Humane Society. And we started this program over ten years ago, so we've been serving the community that long, helping people who generally, it's domestic violence victims. It also can be victims of natural disasters. When they're displaced, for whatever reason, if they're looking for sheltering at one of our, one of the shelters, sometimes at hotels, wherever they can find housing. A lot of times their pets can't come with them, and that's where we come in. So if they need to find sheltering, you know, for the safety of them and their family, but they can't bring their pet, a lot of times they're kind of stuck between a rock and a hard place. They don't really know what to do because pets are family and they don't want to leave their family behind. So they can contact us, you know, we'll get all the information about their case. We'll make sure that they do have someplace safe to stay. And then we'll board their pets at our facility. We usually do it a month at a time, and then toward the end of the month, they'll check in with us, kind of see where they're at with housing, and we can always give them an extension. So we'll do another thirty days just to see if they can get into someplace where they can bring their pets with them. So Tom recently reached out to me a couple of months ago, and he said, hey, you know, we have some veterans who are kind of in similar positions with being displaced and needing to find shelter, but not being able to bring their pets with them, and can we partner? So we said absolutely, why not? You know, these people need help as well. And so we're really lucky to have Tom and the Veterans Affairs Department to support the veterans as well while they're finding shelter and housing. Because I think that's a big part of it. A lot of times people are kind of on their own, and they don't really know where to go and what to do. And so on his end, they're helping the people, and on our end, we're helping the pets while the people get everything in order where they can be reunited.
That's great. Great. Do you have any comments, Commissioner?
Well, you're helping the people as well as helping vets, because, you know, many folks who've done military service, there's a special connection they have with their animals, as a lot of folks are. During a time of even more disruption, that level of disruption could even aid to significant challenges from a behavioral health and emotional health perspective. So thank you for what you do, first of all, and that's extraordinarily important. And tell me about this partnership. I mean, is this a sort of a matter of coming to the commissioners to ask for a level of support, request? You know, how can we be able to assist you? You're here providing, I think, some information. I hope, hopefully, people at home, if they're struggling through similar situations, they're going to have an opportunity now to know that that there may be an option for their pet rather than no option in the case that they find themselves in the same transitional situation. So how can we help support you in this initiative?
So right now, we've only had one veteran family reach out to us that we are helping. The process is that they reach out to Tom and his folks, and then he reaches out to me. So Tom, do you have any more information about how they can be?
So Commissioner, so it's kind of like, when I get a call about homeless vet, the first person I call is Erica. She helps place homeless vets. Then if they have a pet, then we loop Courtney in and the Humane Society say, hey, I have a vet, the pet is going through the hub bash program. Okay, then she calls the vet, bring the pet out there. She goes through her process. We kind of follow that vet through the process of getting everything he, you know, his medical needs, getting shelter, and then getting him reunited with the vet. And I think, you know, we're just here to inform you of what the program is and what our collaboration is together, because this is something new with the Veterans Affairs Office for us. And like you said, we have one person going through it now, but last year, there were like three vets that, you know, came, came to me and said, hey, I have a pet, homeless, what do I do? I called Erica, and we're like, okay, well, can a family member take care of them? Can a friend take care of them? And, you know, I've been thinking, there has to be a better. And then when I read about her Safe Haven program, that's when I reached out to her and said, hey, you know, can you give me some more information about this program? And I said, well, can we do that for vets also? And Courtney was like, sure. And then I went out and met with her. We looked at everything and said, we don't got to reinvent the wheel. We just have to include vets when we have. And that's basically what, what the program.
We're saying that, I want to extend our thank you for your willingness to help. And know that we could, this board will be here as a resource for you. I mean, whether it comes to, you know, having us support your local fundraising events, or, you know, if you have capital needs, I know we partnered with the Humane Society in the past with some gaming grants that assisted them, I think, with their roof replacement. But know that we're here as a resource, as you help the residents of this community and the pets of the community. We certainly want to be here as a resource for you to be able to enable these kinds of good partnerships to be able to continue. So thank you for what you do.
Thank you so much.
I want to start off by thanking you for being here today. Appreciate that. Tom, you continue to think outside the box on behalf of the veterans here in Dauphin County, whether they be homeless or not. The work that you and your staff do is tremendous, so we thank you for, again, being there for the veterans. Is there a website or phone number for folks listening at home, or we could put out there for folks to contact you?
On our website, we do have a page about our Safe Haven program. On our page, it is going to refer back to what we've traditionally served, which is victims of domestic violence and natural disasters. So if they are on the veteran's side of it, then Tom would be the person to contact over at Veterans Affairs Department, and then he'll get in touch with us.
Okay, and your website is www.
HumaneSocietyHBG.org.
Okay, thank you very much. And as we see more natural and man-made disasters occurring, you see the peril on people's faces, the human side of it. But a lot of times, then, people say, well, we left our dog, we left our cat behind, we left our bird behind, and you often wonder what happened to those animals. And if there's opportunities for folks to place their animals here in a safe environment, something is a good thing for our residents as well.
And we do include things outside of traditional natural disasters. We've had house fires, we've had flooding in the house, we had.
We had lead, so a family was displaced due to high levels of lead in the home, so we've helped with that. We also do, not only service Dauphin County, we do Cumberland and Berry as well.
Try County area. Thank you very much. Keep up the great work.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much for the work you're doing. I have two dogs, big, big fan of dogs, and obviously boarding costs are expensive when you go out of town. And the idea of being, you know, in a challenging financial situation where you're trying literally find something as basic as housing and be thinking about how you're going to, you know, board your dog in that situation if you're trying to just get back on your feet. I think what you're doing, it's really important, certainly for domestic violence victims who, I think, are already dealing with the, you know, emotional loss of a relationship and the struggle through that, to then also dealing with that with their pet. So thank you so much for the work you're doing to be able to allow them to, to keep that relationship, but have to work through, you know, how they can, how they can bring that into their new housing situation. So thank you so much for being a resource to seeing this need and meeting this need for our community and members of our community who are, you know, some of the most, you know, vulnerable population. So thank you so much for that work. And like, you know, Commissioner Harwick says, if there's anything we can do to help spotlight or highlight, if you have something coming up that we can share or let people be aware of, or you can show up to, get you a proclamation for those kind of things, please don't hesitate to let us know. We certainly want to support the work you're doing because it's really important. Thanks for being here and sharing about it.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Vision for Equity, PA Family Network, Sarah Nye. Good morning. Morning.
Sit here. Yeah. Do you want me to do this? Yeah. Hi. Uh, good morning. My name is Sarah Nye, and thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today. I am here today as a volunteer on my own. I live in Hursey, PA, with my parents and my cat, Dora. I have lovely chickens. I enjoy dancing, working after music, and listening to my band. I am also active in different sports. I hope to own my own house and create a new to channel in my future. I serve as a family advisor for the Vision for Equality PA Parenting Network as well as a social media coordinator for analyzing the status of quality capital area employment for inclusion. My work focuses on empowering vendors and their families by providing resources, guidance, and family action. I am working with the PA Effective Technology Foundation on a campaign for effective technology months. I have been selected to be a part of Tech House's active technology eighteen, ten P M program. I will be a member of a PA graduate panel for ending twenty twenty five. Disability employment and sharing that story. I was honored to be, to have selected for the twenty twenty four National Darknessed Zone Society, the Empire Award. This award is given to someone who advocates and brings awareness to the darknessed community. This summer, I was awarded the K Smith twenty twenty five New Mental Award. I have an important role as a theater pastor with the National Darknessed Zone Society, N D S A. I advocate for the darknessed community, and I assist with N D S A's train. All officers my train were going to spirit in Dauphin County. I have been assisting with the Crisis Intervention Train C I T program, which is provided to law enforcement. This is Edward Slayer, a nonman from Manhattan who had darknessed, and twenty hours into the team, he even went to the movie with his egg. After the movie, even they went to get the car. Even went back into the theater, security was called, and when he refused to leave the theater, after a police officer showed a small security, knew excessive force to remove him, to actually even pass away. This, this story made me feel sad because he just wanted to see the movie. Because of this story, I went to assist the National Darknessed Zone Society with train law enforcement regarding counters with, of people with disabilities. Law enforcement has a tough job. They need to make decisions fast. At their train, dramatic examples are given on how to react to someone with a disability. And I give examples on how to interact with me. When I present sometime, I cannot say all my words clearly, so the officers must listen closely to me or ask me what I have to say. This is what will happen in a way I'm saying. But you understand every word I have said, it wasn't on the time point. What I tell the police officers and their train that I assist with. Sometimes I have trouble understanding instructions, and I might say I understand when I really do not. I have trouble recalling when a vet have a call. I tell them how to talk to me and to talk to me in a less disrespectful way. I might be upset and cry, business or other communication devices might hurt me. I think when law enforcement has trained, it helps them accept that when encountering someone with a disability, like me, or someone with autism or another disability. Without proper training, officers can easily misputate persons' behavior, which can lead to tragic endings. According to research, law enforcement officers who receive disability education are better able to diffuse discrimination and honor occasioned force. I assist with two different trains. There are several trains available. Do you know that train for law enforcement regarding disability is not mainly? This issue is for the program to me, and I have friends who are police officers and friends who have a disability. I want to keep them both safe. Please show me in requesting that all law enforcement officers receive train on disability. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Sarah. Sarah, who's here with you today?
Uh, this is my mom Carol.
Your mom Carol. You must be really proud. Thank you for allowing Sarah to be here and share with us. I know I met you both at National Night Out and was really excited when I heard Sarah's story. And I'm excited she's able to bring it here to the commissioners. Obviously, I'm going to give Commissioner Hartwig a chance to respond in person.
You sit, had me sitting up here cheesing. You hear me? The, the idea of an individual who, uh, you know, a lot of us complain on our lives and the circumstances and issues that we face, and we have somebody in front of us not only is overcoming challenges, uh, in a forthright and direct way, but is also thinking about what it is they can do to make others who are in similar circumstances, uh, not have to struggle and deal with issues that you can do something about. Uh, and for me, that gives me so much excitement, um, pride and gratitude, uh, for seeing you here in an advocacy role, uh, seeing the things you've already overcome and, you know, taking this position because I completely agree with you. Uh, the more education that we can provide, uh, to folks and the smartest people that I know know there's always a lot to learn. Uh, they want to listen and understand and really get better as a result of new information. Um, and we've seen with CIT and the things that you have done within the CIT training, uh, the remarkable differences and the safety that comes as a result of education of both law enforcement officers and, uh, folks from the disability community. It's, uh, uh, it's a win-win-win all of the way around and, um, you know, uh, there is no better advocates, um, that speak out than those individuals that are doing it with a pure purpose and ones that continue to, um, do it for the best interest of others and including yourself. So, I'm proud of you today, young lady. You hear me? I'm, I'm very proud of you. Uh, I'm very proud of the work that you've, uh, already done and I'm committed to joining you in whatever way that I can, uh, to be able to assist in, you know, both the continual training. I, I remember for a while here in the county when we were trying to get all law enforcement officers up to speed with mental health training and I was told they'll never participate. That, that 15 years ago, that, that, they just won't do it. And today we're standing here, uh, where we've got, I think, close to 90% of all of our law enforcement officers in this county now trained, uh, and, and responding differently. And the things that are required of our police enforcement, enforcement officers continue to grow. And I think I want to thank them too for being receptive to continuing to learn, to continue to improve their skillsets and continuing to keep service and safety, uh, paramount. So, um, great work today. Great work today. And, um, let me know when we take the show on the road because, uh, uh, whether it's, uh, here, whether it's at the State House, um, and whether it's advocating for additional resources, if you can figure out specific ways that we not only model this in Dolphin County, but maybe it's something you take to the County Commissioners Association and say, hey, we've successfully done this in Dolphin County. Would you be willing to replicate this in other counties? So, great work. I'm with you. I feel your passion and your energy. You're making a difference and I'm proud of you. Thank you for bringing this to your attention.
Commissioner Hartwick, I think you, uh, as usual, uh, hit the nail head on. Uh, great remarks. I totally agree with you and, and Sarah, it's great to see a fellow Hershey resident here in the county case. Yes, yes, yes. Uh, as a proud father of a Pennsylvania police officer, uh, I do realize, and you said it right in here, that they do face challenges. Uh, every morning they get up to work, they don't know whether they're coming home at night. We just saw the tragic events down in York County a couple of weeks ago. And police do have a tough, tough job. Every single day they put on that uniform and leave their homes. We all have missions in life, various missions. This clearly is your mission. Uh, you are engaged and active. You're changing lives and potentially saving lives, as you mentioned in here also with that young man who was at the theater. Um, hopefully our law enforcement does engage fully as Commissioner Hartwick stated. And Commissioner Hartwick, I gotta say thank you to you as well for many years ago, bringing up mental health training and, and the CIT where, is this going to work? Well, not only has it worked, it's, it's worked very, very well, uh, where the training has exceeded our expectations, but the training that you're going to provide as an individual, uh, who lives it, that can bring that to our law enforcement community, uh, with your knowledge, uh, you are certainly, um, an individual who, uh, is here for a reason and follow through on your mission and we're here to assist you moving forward. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
My colleagues have said everything, but I just want to say thank you. Thank you for taking time out of your day to come here and share, uh, your story and your advocacy with us. Thank you for advocating. Keep going, keep pushing. Uh, keep, you know, showing up and sharing your story because it will transform people and, uh, please let us know, uh, if there's any way that we can assist. If there's any doors we can open, if you are trying to, you know, get in front of an audience to share some more or to get in front of certain people, please let us know. We want to be, uh, advocates for you as you go advocate, advocate for, for yourself and for others. Um, I just want to say from the Board of Commissioners, I think I could say this for all of us at the county, we're incredibly proud of you and proud to have you as a resident in this county and thank you for your work. I think, I think we should get a picture together. You guys don't think getting a picture together? Can we get a picture together?
I want to.
Great work, young lady. Awesome. Great work. Keep it up. Let us know how we can help. Big work, mom.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you. Good stuff. It's chill. We'll, we'll get you in one and we'll give more mom.
I'll now invite Human Resources, Cassie Ruschinsky.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Um, for the personnel packet today, I'm just requesting a vote on items 32 and 36.
Do I have a motion for items 32 and 36?
Still move.
Moved by Commissioner Hartwick. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Priest. Any discussion?
Yes, just confirming that both of these are within the allocated 2025 budget.
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Director of Budget and Finance, Christopher Davis.
Commissioners?
Good morning.
I have no changes to the purchase order packet that was sent out earlier this week. I'd be able to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions of Mr. Davis? Hearing none, we have no action this week, correct?
Correct.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Chief Clerk's report, Mr. Haggerty.
Good morning, Commissioners. Uh, there are several items on the agenda today for your consideration. Uh, I'd like to first point out, uh, that for item number two, our standard 911 phone and radio maintenance and network agreement, uh, we have a typo. This item is paid for by the county, not PMA. And just for clarity, the amount listed is the total cost over six years and is budgeted for. We've got one domestic relations agreement, two public safety agreements, one IT agreement, approval of recent motions made by the voluntary employee benefits committee relating to employee deferred compensation plans, removal of penalties and interest from a parcel, an agreement with Creole Consulting to address longstanding challenges with the county's implementation of Oracle Enterprise software, 400 bids, which should be considered only contingent on the award of additional funding. Kelly Torres is receiving a phone call. Two courts agreements, um, and we also have the selection of the county's health insurance and pharmacy benefit administrator. And I'd like to spend a minute providing some background on this agreement. Uh, earlier this year, the board elected to have a benefits consultant conduct a procurement for these important services for our employees and their dependents. Uh, this RFP has resulted in a recommendation to select Highmark and their pharmacy partner, Express Scripts. This switch is expected to save the county nearly $2 million per year based on our current utilization rates. Although more details will be forthcoming for employees, I do want to be clear, uh, that this agreement does not contemplate changes to current premiums, copays, deductibles or covered services. The provider network of doctors has more than 99% overlap with our current provider network and the prescription formulary is 97% identical to our current plan. So, we would expect minimal disruption for employees and I, I wanted to make sure that was clear to anyone, uh, listening at the moment. Uh, and additional information will be forthcoming should the board ultimately approve this agreement. Uh, lastly, as a reminder, the county's engineering RFP has been published online on the county's website. We are excited to see interested parties, whether they are individual professional engineers, small businesses or larger firms at the mandatory pre-proposal meeting this coming Monday, October 6th at 2:00 PM here in the Commissioners Hearing Room. That concludes my report. Unless there are any questions.
I may have missed it, but item number nine, am I correct that that's contingent on funding?
Yes, uh, the 400 bits should be considered contingent on the award of additional funding.
Okay. Any other questions, Mr. Haggerty?
Uh, yes, item five, if you could give a description on item five.
The voluntary, uh, employee benefits committee recently adopted motions that make changes to a variety of investment options that employees have at their disposal as part of the deferred compensation plan that, uh, is a voluntary plan employees can enroll in. If there are specific questions on those motions, I would invite Chris Davis up, uh, who may be able to speak to them or may, may not be able to.
I just wanted to sum.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Moving on to Solicitor's Report, Mr. Owens.
Thank you, Commissioner. All matters requiring board action have been reviewed and approved by the Solicitor's Office.
Any questions of Mr. Owens? Okay, I don't seem to have a training packet, but maybe we do have one for approval. Um, do we have one for approval?
There are no training requests for the week.
No requests.
No, no training request, okay. So, let's get through that. Matters requiring board action. We have 11 items before us for board action. Does anything need to be pulled out and voted on separately?
I just need to have 11 separate.
Okay. We will vote on 11 separately. Uh, do I have a motion for items one through 10?
So moved, second.
Moved by Commissioner Hartwick, seconded by Commissioner Priest. Uh, I want to ensure your motion and second are also recognizing that item number two, his services are paid for by Dolphin County. Just want that to be on the record and make sure my colleagues are in agreement with that. And then number nine is contingent on further funding. Am I correct on both of those?
Yep.
Correct.
And, uh, Commissioner Hartwick, you're good with the motion you made reflecting that. You're good with the second you made reflecting that. Okay. Any other discussion?
Yeah, I want to take a moment and thank Capital Blue Cross for not only three years of outstanding service for the employees of Dolphin County, um, but also they were there when we needed the fourth year extension and they again provided another year of outstanding service to the employees of the county and I want to make sure they stated that on the record. I felt they were very professional. Any issues that came up from staff, uh, or their families, uh, I've been told they followed up on it immediacy. Appreciate the service.
I echo those thanks and I also want to thank our consultant, Benefits DNA, for their work in, uh, helping us through the process, uh, of selecting, uh, a medical provider. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. On item number 11, do I have a motion? I'll make a motion for item number 11.
Second.
Seconded by, uh, Commissioner Priest. Uh, any discussion?
Yes, that I've been represented by JSDC in the past and out of an abundance of caution, I want to recuse myself from any supportive vote.
Great. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
It's not my recusal.
No, no, your recusal. Yeah. All right, motion carries. Uh, former business?
None.
New business? We'll begin with Commissioner comments. Commissioner Hartwick.
Uh, yes, thank you, Commissioner Douglas. Um, we had, uh, quite a weekend, uh, this weekend. I had a great, uh, opportunity to, uh, be the keynote speaker at a church service, uh, on, at Faith Deliverance Church on Sunday, uh, for the We Do Recover event. Um, it was a extraordinarily powerful, um, opportunity to participate in a church service, but even, um, I'm more grateful to be able to deliver my testimony and, uh, encourage folks through, uh, both, uh, faith, our, um, shared experience and, and hope, uh, to be able to understand that we do recover. And, uh, the response from this, the community was just overwhelmed, positive and grateful to Pastor Dunbar and the members of the congregation, uh, for the opportunity to speak and to address the congregation. And for all of those who showed up on 17th Street this Sunday, uh, we, we were blessed by a great turnout. Uh, we also had the great opportunity to, um, uh, attend the Hack Mela, uh, for the Bhutanese community, which was extraordinarily well-attended. Um, great dance, great culture. Saw my neighbors, uh, had a chance to, uh, interact, um, uh, on a whole host of levels, including, uh, discussing a little bit about suicide prevention, uh, and the opportunities to do some great work, uh, in a culturally competent way, uh, with our partners in the Bhutanese community. Uh, yesterday had an opportunity to join, um, uh, Carla Hill and the Sickle Cell Foundation in advocating for a cure for sickle cell, uh, both legislatively and, uh, financially. Uh, we need to continue to understand and recognize that that disease is still a painful disease plaguing many within our community and raising awareness and advocating for that is, uh, continues to be a priority. Today, I know we've got, uh, a, uh, meeting, uh, with the Hershey entities at, um, uh, Founder's Hall, Milton Hershey, uh, with an update on the economic report. And later today, I will be touring Tech Centro and all the great work that they have been doing in, uh, providing job training, um, and, uh, resources, uh, to those in our, in our growing Latino population. So, looking forward to that. Today, yes, is, uh, Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Uh, therefore I have worn my pink today in honor thereof. So, uh, thank you again for, for the opportunity to provide comments.
Commissioner Priest.
Thank you. I want to give a shout out to Director Jeff Enders of EMA Public Safety and Security for hosting yesterday's employee appreciation luncheon. A lot of staff were out there. I was actually joined by Controller Mary Bateman. We were out there thanking our great staff for the work that they do 24/7, 365 to 400 plus thousand calls they take in per year, 315,000 emergency dispatches, working with police, fire, EMS, uh, for tragedies that come upon us on a daily basis. The car accidents, the, uh, the issues, uh, with homes and, uh, within the homes and, and tragic incidents, uh, that those folks are there. They're the calm, cool, collect voice on the other end of the phone. When someone's calling, uh, potentially having the, the worst moments of their life, uh, that's why anytime that I have an opportunity, and again, thank you, Mary, for joining, uh, to go say thank you to those individuals for the work that they do, uh, it is greatly appreciated. So, Jeff, thank you for having me, Mr.
Thank you, Commissioner Priest. Um, I had the opportunity to go to Tech Centro, uh, and see their job training center. It's really great. You're going to enjoy that visit. Uh, they're doing some great work there and expanding that work to the second floor, adding more opportunities. And, uh, it's exciting to see, um, workforce development being expanded in our community. Certainly, we know it's something that's needed for, uh, all different levels of workforce and, uh, and, and they're making a big impact. I was at the, uh, BCH, uh, Mella event as well at, at Hack. Very well attended, thousands of people there, um, and, uh, just amazing opportunity to kind of experience, uh, the Bhutanese, the Poli culture, uh, to, you know, eat food. Uh, they, they, I, I was there early and they, they walked me around. They were like, here, eat this, eat this. And then they gave me some fact, this is really hot. And I'm like, I'll, I'll give it a try. And I'm like, I'm just going to tell you, it was definitely really hot. Um, uh, there, there was food, dance, uh, taekwondo, all kinds of great things. Uh, one of the things that was unveiled there was that they changed their name from, um, to, uh, uh, Bhut, Bhutanese, uh, Community of Central Pennsylvania. Uh, just seeing the impact they're having across our region, uh, and the ways in which they're able to support, uh, not just, uh, Harrisburg, but, uh, the entire region. And I think that's really something that, uh, we've seen. We've already known they've had that impact, but their name now reflecting that impact. It was, uh, exciting to be there alongside Commissioner Hartwick and other electeds, um, celebrating that name. celebrating that name change and celebrating the culture and ultimately it being on display. Something that I think, an event that I think will continue to grow and that I want to encourage more people from Dolphin County to come out and experience. You know, I didn't have much exposure to the Bhutanese Nepali community until I became a Commissioner. And I, and I wish I would have known, you know, the, just their story and what it means in the sense of the struggles that they've gone through, the challenges they've had, ultimately all that they've overcome. And then ultimately to see them celebrating, to see just how much their culture means to them and how much their heritage means to them and to be able to celebrate with them. It was really a great event. Last night, from around eleven PM till about two-thirty in the morning, I was at the jail observing and assisting in the transition from Prime Care to Medico. I want to thank Medico for, for being there, being present, being ready. There were nurses on top, nurses bumping into each other. We had plenty of staff. But I do want to express some frustration. What I witnessed in this transition is incredibly frustrating. A member of Medico's IT team last night told me, I, I have never seen this level of obstruction with medical data. Another with more than thirty years of experience in these transitions said this was the first time he had ever seen a provider refuse to turn over essential information. He called it unprecedented. The issue is simple. We're asking for what is necessary to safely provide medical care. We've been asking for this throughout this entire transition, the last few weeks, especially, we've ramped it up. I've even reached out to the Solicitor's Office and had them craft letters because we were anticipating there being problems in this area. The med pass, patient chart, scheduled tasks and appointments. These are the lifeblood of continuity of care. Prime Care is allowing us to see this information, but only in read-only format. That means none of it can be transferred for use. Instead, it must be re-entered by hand, one patient, one chart, one record at a time. What should take hours will now take an untold amount of time and taxpayer money to recreate. And I just want to give you an analogy of one, just one bucket. Medico's team told me this represents appointments. And when I say appointments, what I mean is if you are a patient and you have a follow-up appointment that's scheduled, this represents roughly the printout of the appointments. Imagine, you know, my executive assistant who manages my calendar, schedules out my calendar. I have things on my calendar six months from now with, you know, locations, with notes, with all kinds of information. And imagine I got a new executive assistant. Instead of transferring over the calendar, I printed everything out and said manually enter it into my calendar. And then imagine I did that for nine hundred inmates. Do you think I would make every one of my appointments? Do you think all nine hundred of those people would? This is what we're looking at having to data enter just for appointments. I'm not even talking about charts. I'm not even talking about patient history. By the way, all of which is data that is our data. This is not Prime Care's data. It is inmate data first, to be honest. And it's Dolphin County data. It was created under our contract with Prime Care, paid for by your tax dollars. And it exists solely for the purpose of ensuring safe and effective medical care for the people in our custody. And yet, Prime Care is choosing how and where it is stored, limiting how it is accessed, and effectively loaning us access to our own records without any contractual authority to do so. It is as if they are holding our medical data hostage. This is not just a bureaucratic inconvenience. It puts people at risk. It forces doctors and nurses to provide care without the tools they need. It burdens taxpayers with unnecessary costs, all the data entry that is going to need to be done. And it treats the lives and the wellbeings of the incarcerated individuals as collateral in a corporate dispute. This is unacceptable. Adding to these challenges, Prime Care has also removed county property, creating even more obstacles for the team at Medico as they are on board. Given the severity of what's taken place, I am directing our solicitor to explore every legal option available to ensure Dolphin County receives full access to its records immediately and without any further obstruction. Thank you. We will now head into a time of public participation as I don't see any correspondence. Public participation is three minutes and I will have a list in front of me and then I will open it to the floor. I see Gene Stilt as the only one signed up for public participation. Gene, you know how this works.
Hey, I apologize for not being here last week. I heard you came up with and had the, the statue here. I was stuck in traffic and behind an auto accident. Okay. But, but I didn't get to see the actual statue. Okay, thank you.
Gene Stilt, Fish Creek Valley. It sounds like for the prison issue, immediate TROs are in order for, to stop that. That's, that's horrible. Okay. Well, the constellation energy plan for selling all its future produced energy to Microsoft, for Microsoft's data centers in Northern Virginia is advancing. The citizens of Dolphin County and nearby other communities, counties are taking all the risk and slowly awakening to implications that the plan includes. We all sometimes are startled by this car that is right next to us, but is in our blind spot. We say, how did I miss this car and our truck in my blind spot? Luckily, I noticed it at the last second where it could have been serious. Most folks in our county still do not realize the implications of the reopening of Three Mile Island is in their blind spots. Only time and pain, and only time and the pain of that person like myself or Eric Epstein may alert them to the implications that they shouldn't have been paying attention to all along. I've been, I have been forever harping on the impossibility of evacuating the hospitals in the area. How do you evacuate Hershey Medical Center? Six hundred beds and a thousand employees and folks attending appointments? Impossible. And don't forget, there are ten other hospitals in the four counties. As I always talk about the, and I always talk about the schools, tens of thousands of students. What about the nursing homes, high-rises nursery schools? I also refer to the prioritizing of constellation energy over other, over, excuse me, over other area businesses in the region whose combined worth outweighs TMI's unit one value. Don't tell Hershey Foods that, that they have to evacuate all their plants and infrastructure with the possibility of their returning. Think of that. By the way, what is the value of the assets that are basically owned by the people of Dolphin County that you folks administer? Yes. All the government buildings, vehicles, other equipment. How much are these assets worth? What about, what about the right to make decisions that risk these assets? Did you consult all the citizens without risking, about risking their mutually owned property? What about the individually owned homes and businesses? No, you have not. These are the things, these are the things for people of, often kind of think about, things that are still in their blind spots. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stilt. Is there anyone else for public comment?
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
Pamela Parsons, City of Harrisburg. I'm really sorry that Sarah and I left because I really want to thank her for her presentation today. And I especially appreciated her sharing her, the story about Ethan, because that's not an isolated incident. We have people with intellectual disabilities in our own county who have been beaten and otherwise harassed by police because they did not understand what was being said to them. And add to that, that one in particular that I know is also large and black. So this is something that we need to pay attention to with law enforcement. But for all of us, I think, how many of us have been in a grocery store where a child is having a meltdown and we assume that it's bad parenting? Not that it is a child who might have autism or another intellectual disability. From nineteen seventy-six until two thousand and two, this country executed thirty-five people with intellectual disabilities. Atkins versus Virginia in two thousand and two, which ended executing people with intellectual disabilities. They said that it was cruel and unusual. But there are still maybe as many as eighty percent of the folks who are sentenced to death, who have some type of intellectual disability and on top of that, perhaps a mental illness. So I think, again, I would really like to thank Sarah for being here and for reminding us of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Pam. Anyone else for public comment?
Good morning, Commissioner.
Good morning.
Butts, Lewis Butts.
Harrisburg.
I see our city moving into a constant dive. We need to have jobs in Harrisburg, Pennsylvania to bring up our economic in our downtown region. Hershey is on a, this type of incline. Harrisburg is like this. Now, what we need is a superstructure. I had proposed a Harrisburg International Aquarium at the post office right there. Now, the futures has said that we're going to have high-speed training, that the high-speed trains coming from the west going straight through Harrisburg and stopping here at a stop. Harrisburg is a point, a destination. We need to make it a, a power, a powerhouse for economic development and retail as well as tourism. Hershey has that blueprint. We'd follow things like, in our region, we compete. Harrisburg versus Hershey, Harrisburg versus Gettysburg, which is over there, but I'm just speaking our region. When we talk about tourism dollars, Harrisburg needs something. We need a destination that's going to bring us up out of our dive. Okay? Hershey, we can, we could ask the brilliant people of our region to come up with something, to put something together, the men to get something together so we can have something for people to come to, that people usually go to. That is a norm for our families when they go places. And if it's on a speed rail, they can start the west coast and stop here and don't have to really necessarily go outside to the region because we have a transportation system that provides it. And we need to think in that vein. Harrisburg and others, Harrisburg leaders, they have forums for what Harrisburg, what they suggest for us to do. But they don't bring people from Harrisburg with, that are savvy and have some wherewithal and know the trends of Americans, what Americans do. We need to create jobs. An, an international aquarium, HIA, just like the Harrisburg International Aquarium, see how you've got to tie these things in. It's about jobs. If we wouldn't save some of the things that happen out in the prison, we create jobs. So people aren't forced to go into that, that hole, that hole that is, is big, that you're feeling. We have to make sure that we have jobs to prevent that from happening. When this young lady's talking about different activities that she can get involved in or, or about cops, that's where it's provided. All these people want something that they can get into and they can be involved in. That's how we change our perception of who we are. Because you might have a perception of who, the type of guy that I am. You see what I'm saying? It's a different take. We have to change our narrative. We have to offer something else. And that, that, that's, you know, I come in here and I try to draw some kind of bridges and bridge the gap to the things that you know. You know Hershey works. They don't have an aquarium though.
The three minutes has expired, Mr. Butts.
Thank you, Mr. Butts.
Great.
Appreciate you. Anyone else for public comment? None. All entertain motion for adjournment. Second, moved by Commissioner Hartwick, seconded by Commissioner Priest. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Adjourn.